Okay, I'd like to call this-
Is this a regular?
Yep.
Regular school board meeting in order? Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First hearing of the public. Okay. This is probably gonna be my last school board meeting. Because when I get done, I don't think you guys want to see me again. I've been coming here since 1990, when my oldest daughter started school. And in all that time, I've had only one phone call returned to me about one of the questions I left asked, and that was from Bill Smith. When he got done, him and I talked about the fences around these open drain ditches at the elementary school. And they kept saying that the state is the one responsible for it, so that's fine. I'll deal with that later. But right now, I've got three questions for you guys that has lingered on for many years now. From the time that we went from having a $21 million surplus to being $21 million in the hole, and we lost all those teachers, nobody has ever explained to me where that money went to. I don't think they've ever told the public where it went to. So that's one thing that I'm kinda upset about. The second one is the fact that the state and nobody else can make up their mind on what they want these kids to understand and study while they're in school. They need to go back and start teaching the old way. Teaching them how to read, how to write, how to do math, how to do science, English and history. This new stuff with these fantastic little tests will never get them anywhere in this world, and that's the reason why we're still falling behind everybody else. Now, the last thing I'm gonna bring up, and I'm gonna leave after this, I wanna know where that other meeting's at, so maybe I can try to make it. But I've been told for eight years that I had kids bowling after my oldest daughter got out of it, and when my two next kids come into this, that as a parent, I was not allowed to coach them because I had a child on the team. Now, that comes straight from Brian Corey. Well, he's a liar. A ball-faced liar. You can nullify him that, tell him that, tell him I said it, I don't care. But when you allow a coach, his name is Chaz Lasquere, to coach, and then coach his son while he's a coach, then I think there was two sets of rules. One for me and one for everybody else. Because I brought this up ever since the bowling started back into the programs. And we got it back in as a sport, not as a club. And the reason why we wanted it as a sport was so the colleges would recognize it. Because as a club, they don't recognize it. I'll throw one more thing out there for you guys to think about also. And maybe if somebody would ever like to give me a call and give me the answer, is to think about this. Every time that a school tats lady has come up, it's the South Side that has carried this. It's not the West Side, it's not anybody else, it's the South Side. South Side is always the ones that either pass it or fail it. And that brings us right to our college program that you guys has got started here. Now, my daughter didn't qualify it, my daughter Tabitha didn't qualify for it, my son didn't qualify for it. Nobody could ever tell me why they never was qualified for it. But the year that my daughter graduated, there was a young man, which I congratulate him, he done a real good job, he graduated not only with an associate's degree, but he also graduated with a bachelor's degree. But we was told that the parents couldn't graduate from college. But his father congratulated him, which was a doctor, and his mom congratulated him, who was also a doctor. So I think somewhere along the line, that got screwed. And somewhere along the line, I wanna find out how many kids from the South Side of Lorraine actually qualified that program. Because of all the years that I've watched this thing go on, I have yet to see any kid from the South Side of Lorraine get a chance to go to college and high school at the same time. Now, my phone number's 440-308-5640. You guys got it? I'm sorry, my name's Terry Mylum. Bill knows me because I've been a pain in his butt all these years.
I just wanna make a statement to tell you that you're not alone with the coaching, that for two years, the same thing with me, I wasn't allowed to coach my two grandsons. And I don't know when this rule came about, because I did have one grandson that I did coach, okay? But when Justin and Brandon came through, it seemed as though they had rules that they didn't want you to do it, so therefore I couldn't-
Then how did Chaz coach his son?
I don't know him, you know, but I mean, I just wanna let you know that you-
I may not be the only one, but they had-
Maybe the rules aren't held up for everybody, but-
Yeah.
For you and for me, that's the way it is.
And they had parents at Clearview High School that had two fathers that coached the daughters, one daughter and one son that helped coach. And then you're Leary High School, which I know is not part of Lorraine here, but would fall underneath the same rules, I would think. The father was a head coach and the man who ran the organization at Leary High School, and he coached his son. So, like I said, rules are made for one group and one rules are made for somebody else. You guys got my phone number? Give me a call if anybody's got any- Go ahead.
Before you take off, and I don't wanna turn this into too much of a debate, but you referenced the deficit that the district had. Now, I just wanna say that I'm not sure all of us at this table can speak to that, because I think that you're talking about the deficit and which had the massive cuts in this district-
Yeah, the massive cuts.
And none of us were here during that time.
And the biggest problem there, Keith Lilly was a CPA. He should've known where every single penny went to. Because that's the reason I stopped going to him, for him doing my taxes.
Yeah, I was there too.
What I can say is this with that piece, that deficit, so there are a number of things that occur. You get these forecasts, these reports, and this has happened to a number of districts. I'm not defending it at all, but I think from what I understand, because none of us were on the board at the time, there was an error made by the treasurer in a report of some kind. And the truth is, when you have a deficit, the deficit was always there usually, they missed something, so it wasn't like the money disappeared. I think what happened is there was a projection of revenue that was inaccurate, and then all of a sudden, because I remember Cheryl Atkinson came in, and believe me, we're friends, when she was interviewed, she didn't know, because she came in and immediately faced like a 200-person riff or something. And I tell you, as a superintendent, very few super would take a job. If they know the first day on the job, they're gonna be handed a riff of 250 teachers. So there was some accounting errors, there was something that was going on, so that it's not like there was this surplus and it was spent. There was a projection that wasn't accurate. And again, so-
Then why didn't they ever tell anybody?
We weren't there then, so I don't know. I mean, I can't speak to it. I'm just, and even what I'm saying, I can't say this is factual. I would suspect based on how I've seen this in other places, where it appears that we have this revenue, it ain't really there, or some errors made. And again, with budgets like we have, you can make one error here, and that thing spins out into significant difference.
I can't speak for the other Board of Education that dealt with that deficit, but what I can speak to is the fact that many of the board members here, the past treasurer and past administration, as well as the unions and the people, the staff in this district, listen, all of them came together to work hard to minimize that deficit and reduce that reduction in force list down to zero, and get a lot of those people back in this district, and bring back some of those programs they cut. So, we dealt with it. We don't know what exactly happened, we can't speak to that, but we tried to deal with it the best way we possibly could at that time. And because of it, I think financially, this district was put in a pretty good position.
Well, then, we were just released from a fiscal watch scenario that was created by years of these deficits. And when we came on the board, the three of us, there was 4 million, then 7 million deficit, then 12 million, so again, it's-
We handled 21-point, I think it was 21.4 million dollars over a period of a couple of years, and that was in cuts. Then we passed the levy, and the biennial budget kicked in, helped us out.
We got more from the governors than we've ever gotten.
And last year, I think we had a 6 million carryover, which was the first time that's happened in a long time, you know, got a new treasurer, you know, and so-
Well, something needs to be done. You know, I'm telling you, this is my last meeting. I have gotten more kids into schools, and six years from now, I retire. And when I retire, I'm leaving the city and leaving the state, so-
The one thing that did interest me what you said is that these ponds that are created, these holding ponds, see, there's still nothing that, is there any fences around them?
What I was told, the reason why they didn't put them around the elementary schools was because it wasn't necessary, the state deemed it unnecessary. And I told them in one of the meetings that I come to, that the city, the state does not have enough money to replace a child that would fall down in there, because the one over there by Hellenstein Rice has on several occasions backed up to being better than halfway full. And you're gonna tell me that a kid doesn't wanna play in that water? Ain't a kid alive that doesn't wanna play in water. And if they would actually get stuck at the bottom and nobody knew it, like I said, the city and the state doesn't have enough money to replace my child.
And while you're here, I don't think anybody else is speaking at the hearing of the public. I just wanna say that this doesn't have to be your last meeting, we appreciate if you came to more of them, but I think the program you're talking about is early college.
Yep.
And you would be accurate in saying that there was a requirement in early college that clearly defined that the students that were-
Approved.
Approved to be part of that program needed to be first-generation college students. Now, to your point, now, this board did work on phasing early college out for a number of reasons. Number one reason was financially, it was extremely costly program. And number two, because we worked with the college to create Titan College, which kept our kids here. It served more of our kids, and that's what we wanted to focus on. While early college served a lot of other students from other districts that necessarily weren't first generation. Now, I can't speak to that process, because I wasn't part of the application process, but I would agree with you that that may have been the case. But we don't control that per se. That's a college thing in how they approve that program.
And absolutely, there were students, I can tell you, my daughter scraped it last year, thank goodness, and there were students from South Lorraine who were in early college. I'm sorry that your kids didn't get to participate, my daughter didn't, although just this spring, maybe three weeks ago, she was part of Titan College. And we had some problems, and I'll be frank and honest, and I was a very frustrated parent, I wasn't a school person, I was an angry parent at times, because we had some scheduling problems and some things that got missed. So she, they messed her schedule up, missed some things, and so she missed getting her associate's degree by one class. And had we known this, she could've easily taken it. They told her at the beginning of her senior year that she had to make a choice between one thing and another, which she shouldn't have had to choose between them. We just got her associate's degree, because we sent back college credit, she was a freshman at Ball State, made the dean's list, yay yay, I'm proud dad. But we had to send back a transcript from one of her college classes, and so they then, through LC, granted her her associate's degree, because we were like, she's not gonna finish it here, and we're not gonna have her take seven classes when she's a senior, you know? So again, there were lots of kids who have been wonderfully impacted by early college. And so we don't apologize for that wonderful opportunity that we provided. We're sorry we couldn't make it available for more kids. And then again, there were some kids who maybe didn't hit all the requirements, but again, sometimes, we know these things happen, but the program in itself was an excellent program. If we felt we could've afforded to do it, we'd keep doing it, and we'd expand to more kids. Because getting that kid on that college campus is an exceptional advantage, and that's wonderful, it's a wonderful opportunity. So I'm sorry your kids didn't, my daughter didn't, none of my kids did. But again, for those who did, it was a great, I have not had a parent come to me and tell me how disappointed they were in early college. I've had lots of parents say, I wish my kid would've been a part of, but there was a limited number. And I think they were doing the lottery at one time. And I'll tell you this, the admission piece changed a few times. Because there was some skepticism about folks getting in who shouldn't be in, they put it into a lottery format. So again, they tried to create it so it could be consistent as possible, but I always know that there's influence, and there's different things that get folks in, and that's just part of having those programs. And we believe this, it was better to have that program even with some of those errors than not to have it at all.
Yeah, I think it was a better program than not having something.
Yeah.
You know, give the kid a chance to start out on the right foot and get them out ahead. But when, now, when my daughter graduated, she graduated with a 3.82 grade average, she was in a National Honor Society, but she was never offered the opportunity to go to college until after she got out of school. Now, my son carried until this year, carried a 3.7 grade point average, and I got all over him because he started getting Cs in French and a couple of other classes. And believe you me, I tore him apart because of it. And he got a D, and he got put off the bowling program, which I found out later that I was never notified, because the teachers swore up and down, I never talked to them. You could ask any teacher that's in here that had one of my kids, every time they switched, I come in, I took a day off from work, come in, sat down and talked to them. I gave them my phone number, I gave them my email address, and I told them either text me, call me, or email me if they had a problem with the kid, especially with grades. Because my first choice, I don't care if he was leading the bowling league, I don't care if he had a 300 average, he would not bowl if he wasn't carrying a good grade. And believe you me, I got all over him about it. So when I come to find out that he got put off the team, and then come to find out that I was never notified because she swore up and down, I never talked to her. And it's a little hard to do when Mrs. Valinsky called her in the office, and I talked to her on the end of the first week of their transfer for each, for that quarter, so I'm-
Congratulations on how well they did do. Kids, that's what I learned from the district, some kids in the same district where you have failing kids, you have kids who are extremely successful. And they're great opportunities. I mean, I was talking to the person who's the Amherst bowling coach just this past week, it is amazing, Mark and I talked about this, the scholarships available for bowling, for the first time I've seen bowling on ESPN, college bowling.
Yeah.
It's a great opportunity for kids. And so again, we wanna make sure kids get as many opportunities as possible, but again, in this process, some get, they fall in a gap, it doesn't always work, we apologize for that, but we keep trying to create as many opportunities for kids as possible.
To answer your last question, the other meeting, is that Johnny Wilson?
Go ahead.
And if we had 6,000 more parents like you, they wouldn't be meeting over there today.
Well, I tell you, I always took, I never had a real desire to go to college, I wanted to go into the military. Well, because of football and my size, I was denied the first time I tried to go in. But I got in the second time I went up, when I was 25. And believe you me, I put a lot of those young kids to shame. And I do the same thing now, I'm at work over here at Ford. I got 24 years in, I got six years ago, I'm there at four o'clock every morning, I go work out, I go back down, I get the line set up, get it ready, everything ready to run. Because when I get off and when I go and start work, I want stuff ready to go. I don't wanna stop the line, because that's what they're complaining about. I started to say something else, I caught myself there, about stopping the line. And so I made sure that my area was ready to go, whether if anybody else is, it's not my problem, I take care of my people in my area. But I tell you what, you know, it just, it really perturbs me that some of these kids and stuff, they don't have that dedication to do stuff. And all they wanna do is squeak by. But like I said, the state needs to make up their mind on what they want the kids to study so they can graduate. Because right now, my sister is a tutor out at LC, and she's getting kids from all over the state that can't read above a sixth-grade level, they can't do any math above a sixth-grade level, and they don't comprehend anything but a fifth-grade level. And it's bad. And they wonder why that our kids are not succeeding more, and they gotta bring people from out of the country to do jobs that's used to be filled by Americans. So... And if anybody's got any other questions, I'd be more than glad, I'll come back, but right now, this is gonna be my last one.
Well, we appreciate you.
We want you to come back, because we think that you would be a good guidance for other parents and other students.
And this is something that I brought up when they was looking for the CEO of the school. I said, bringing somebody from out of town, out of state, they don't know what the kids are doing, they have no inkling on what's going on here in the city. When you have a loss of US Steel that at one time had over 11,000 workers, you lost a Lorraine assembly plant that had close to 6,000 workers. When you lose 17,000 workers, it doesn't just affect the direct families, it affects all the small-time convenience stores, all your little clothing stores, all kinds of little shops and stuff. And you lose too much when you take that many jobs out of the system. Now, I hope Lorraine, I hope Lorraine Steel does get back up and get 2,000 or 3,000 people in there, that will help. But you're still far short of 11,000 that was working there, and you're still gonna miss that 6,000 out of Lorraine. Because I started there in '79, and if I could've stayed working, I'd've been retired in 2010. But I had a 14-year IE, just because they didn't wanna keep the young workforce, they kept the older workforce. So, before I got back, it was 14 years later. But I put everything that I known from then until now on the line for everything that I do.
We appreciate that, thank you.
All right, you guys have a good night, have a safe summer.
You too.
You said General Johnny Wilson?
Yep. Don't hold back.
Oh, I'm on.
We need a motion to approve or amend and sign the minutes held in a special board meeting?
As stated.
Discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Any old business? Important recommendations to the treasurer.
I have nothing.
Okay. Also under finance, we discussed it last board meeting, the TIP agreement that we received from the city of Lorraine for the Broadway building, I think you guys had all the information.
We need to bring it up for a motion to be discussed.
Yes, it's on the-
So our motion that we accept the TIP agreement is presented?
With support.
Discussion?
Yes.
So everybody should have the information that you received from the city and also from Josh. Just for the record, I did receive an opinion from our legal counsel, Tony Giardini, and he felt that it was a fair agreement, and didn't find any problem with us moving forward with it. We also talked, I mean, my personal opinion is, we haven't been generating a whole lot of taxes off a vacant building for I don't know how many years now, and certainly, you know, doing something with that building could potentially help us triple that revenue in the future, or future Boards of Education, you know, down the road. But this is also, we discussed this the last time somebody was gonna purchase this building and do something with this building.
And I think for the record, our agreement is really with the, and correct me if I'm wrong, with the Port Authority, because they are the authority that does the bonding and everything else. And so what happened is, we had an agreement, or we had passed the TIP with the same entity, and we've never rescinded that. So technically, that's, and I want to make sure that you were clear about that, Josh, is, we had once already did it, and we never did rescind. So, the agreement is always with the Port Authority, who the other agent was, was immaterial to us. Because our technical agreement was with the Port Authority, correct?
It changes the resolution and everything, but yeah, I mean, technically it was with the Port Authority, the third party would be whoever the, you know, and that changes all the documentation, so you won't necessarily have to rescind it, it had to be adjusted due to the fact that the parties changed.
And I was just making sure that everybody knows, we had done this before-
Yes.
And we went through all of the discussions about the legitimacy of it, why and all that stuff, so it's easier to do that. So yeah, I just wanted to put that on the record that we-
Mr. Brown, would you like to take the floor?
That last deal died for the lack of finance, I think it's better to go forward with where we're at this evening. What I might add this evening is, if you wanted to make a slight amendment, that everything would stay up to 15 years, to, just so we don't have to have further meetings. The city right now offers a 12-year CRA, this was based on a 15-15, so it may go to a 12-18, which would actually be better for the school board, it'd be a better deal in the long run. The city has some hesitancy about changing any CRA legislation up to 15. Legislation at the state level changed to go up to 15 years on rehab and renovations. The city is very hesitant to accept that change in their ordinance, so it may stay at a 12-year. So if you wanted to make a slight amendment in your motions to approve, the deal may be a little bit better. If you say up to 15 years, that would be the intent of the language. I checked with Mr. Mecklenburg from Frost Brown, he stated that would probably be good, but it's cautious, you can always have, give somebody a better deal. I can come back to you later and say, we moved it from 12 to 15, but we could actually move from 15 down to 12. But I at least wanted to break that out, that we, in case there was confusion later, that's where we're at. But again, I appreciate the consideration, the building's been vacant for over 14 years, it's in a state of disrepair, it's an eyesore of Broadway. We've got a great development, we've got a great developer, and she's very education-minded, she's already engaged the college. If we can get early learning programs, we absolutely will over there, and I think it's gonna be good for the city and good for everybody.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to amend our resolution to say up to 15 or less?
No, the resolution itself doesn't say 15 or at all, but she did make a note in the action comments to say adjustment for up to 15.
Everybody okay with that?
Mr. Mecklenburg is gonna send a revised agreement if council decides against voting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's all good, so we're good.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Congratulations, let's move forward, right? One more step for you guys, though. I know, I said, you got one more step down the road.
Tonight's property transfer, next week's, or two weeks from now, so again, thank you very much.
Good luck, you got it.
Have a great evening.
You too. Okay. Also, I know last meeting we talked about the resolutions that Josh had presented to us, we weren't prepared to discuss those on the agenda, but next on the agenda is the levy discussion, so I'll open up the floor for any comments or discussion.
I took the liberty of, over the past week or so, having dialogue, you know what I mean? It's tough for us to really get into deep discussions about things, because they have to do it publicly. But we do have, I think, the reason why we need to speak to each other personally, to just get some sense of where we all were, in terms of what we assess as our needs of the district, but also put it into context of some of the challenges that we have, with clear understanding of what our finances are, where they're going, how they're going, and not just finances, but direction overall. And I think one of the things that I wanted to clarify in our discussion is, we know we need money. Milk prices go up, gasoline, everything goes up, so there's always the need for more money. And our decisions on levies are not only about the fact that we need money, but also reflect that we have a certain confidence, and what we're saying to the community is, we know what we're doing with this money, we know that we're good stewards over it in our past expenditures, in our present, in our future going forward. And I think for me personally, and I appreciate the letter that Mark Ballard wrote, because it defined some of the positions on the board, but it also allowed for us to define where we are in that, on that continuum. And it allowed for, and it's amazing how many conversations that generated from community members towards me. People, we'd had some conversations, but I would say, my conversation- People, we'd had some conversations, but I would say my conversations went up by forty percent, um, because of that. Because it, it stated some things that could have been asking specific questions. I know even, um, we talked in some specific things. And I don't call, I won't go as far as to call anyone untruthful, but sometimes how we present information can be some of misleading. I'm trying to, to be nuanced because I appreciate there are members on our board who are not gonna be that nuanced. And, um, whether it's how we're talking about how salaries are covered and a blanket statement of it's coming from here versus it's some of this from here, some of this from there. So there's a lot of things that I would say we have at least a bit of ambiguity. And we're all asking questions to each other that we can't answer, right? And we're guessing. And so if we're asking these questions to each other and not being provided answers, then I also know that we can't provide answers to our publics. Because the truth is, is some of the things they would ask me, I couldn't say that I know. And, um, not to say I know it's yes or I know it's no. And I think that's very awkward. The other piece that I would say is our levy is, I don't wanna call it sacred, but it is essential. And, um, and from what we've heard from people in our community and from each other, is the question becomes, is this the right atmosphere to pass an issue? And our responsibility is if it's not the right atmosphere, that we have to create the right atmosphere for it to happen. And so, um, you know, I wanted to start out there because even when I talked to Mr. Damacchia, I, we have to have this discussion publicly as Mark stated in that letter. We owe the public that discussion and we owe it to ourselves to sit here and agree and disagree, express our frustration or our lack of knowledge, because we don't know. I mean, I got more unanswered questions than answered questions. So...
And to that point, I wasn't trying to be rude. I'm just getting some clarity on the document that's sitting in front of us.
This is gonna be part of the discussion? What he's talking about?
How can it not be?
Yeah, I mean, well, I'm confused, number one. And here's the problem I have is, you know, it's been under scrutiny by the media. And I think Mr. Sturgill brought it up last meeting about the twenty-one administrative positions. And there was a chart that was produced of the current or future structure of Lorraine High's administrative team. Am I correct in saying that? We did see a chart with twenty-one positions in it, right? That was sent to us as information. So the confusion comes now, I'm looking at this chart that now only has, well, seventeen on here, positions. But then I flipped to the second page and there's only fourteen staff listed. So I'm just confused on how many administrators there are. And I really like to know why we all of a sudden changed that organizational chart after we brought it up and it was in the newspaper about the twenty-one administrative positions. Now it's down to seventeen or fourteen or, I don't even know what it is. So to your point about not getting the proper information, for me, it's real hard for me to talk about giving more money to somebody when they themselves have no idea what they're doing. Because now, in what, we just had a week ago, right? We met, maybe a little over a week ago. And we got a completely different chart than we're getting now, so...
And I can't say they don't know, but I can say I don't know. They might know and haven't told us.
I really don't know now.
Yeah.
Cause I, I just don't know how many positions there are. Are there fourteen? Are there seventeen? Are there twenty-one? And I do know that there were seven last year in this building. So I'm not sure what's going on. But, and you don't have to answer that because that's a question for, you know, the CEO that created these charts or his direct reports. But you can relay the message from the board that we certainly questioned, or I questioned it. And I, you know, it doesn't make a difference who questioned it. I just don't know. So if they're gonna produce a different org chart, can they at least give us the final org chart and stop messing around with this? I mean, do we have a structure? Or we don't have a structure? I just don't know. I'm very confused at this chart compared to the last chart I got. And, I mean, how do you want us to make a decision when we don't even have the right information?
Well, I was confused last meeting when you guys said the twenty-two positions. I, if you remember correctly, I said, that seems awful high. And then Katie spoke up and said, no, it's twenty-two. I'm honestly not sure what, I mean, this, the, the, the only difference in this org chart is initially I thought, when I first saw it, that these positions, or the orange spots on here were positions possibly, but apparently they were responsibilities of the building administrator, Tim Jama. And then the other, there was another arm in the initial org chart off to the, to the left that is not there any longer because that was the position for Robin. And Robin has since taken another position and upon review, that position's not necessary. So there is that piece of it. And initially, this, I don't know if these three positions were included as admin positions. These positions are not admin. They are, uh, support. So career, a career coordinator, which is now Rich Mark's position, is a coordinator position. And the other two are support for early college. And I believe one of these would have been like a, um, secretarial counselor, basically whatever they need support-wise to get through to, whether it's Titan College or Early College with the Early College Academy.
So are there people that report to the career coordinator?
Career coordinator, I, I think the only ones that would, would be, well, I don't even think they report. No, honestly, I don't think they report. I think it's more, he's the one that sets up the, uh, the positions for some of the job placement for, uh, new beginnings or what is now Success Academy.
And that is a non-administrative position?
Correct.
But how do we move forward if we have, we don't have the clarification?
Well, this is, and I went to him specifically and said, you know, I, I keep hearing twenty-two. Can you speak to that? Can you tell me exactly where you think that? He told me he didn't know where the twenty-two came from. Told me this was, he gave me the PowerPoint specifically from his, the meeting they had at the high school where they showed the next year's direction. This was the, the org chart for eighteen-nineteen. And all I did was then take that to build out the list of who's been hired. And you'll notice there are four vacancies. What I did was take the high end of the salary grid numbers, then unplug those in. So it actually could be significantly lower than this within, you know, I think it's like a range of about eighteen thousand.
You got all these could-be's, could-be's.
I can speak to where it came from.
Yeah, it came, any information that came out came from this district. What, Katie, Katie didn't do her own chart.
Chart?
So get, this is what gets, gets to be increasingly frustrating is, I don't know where that came from. It came from us. It came from somewhere, somebody said that. If you were to say to Katie, or Bill, or whoever got these different charts, that, that's not our chart. I mean, it's like having to call somebody a liar. They got their information. We get, we've gotten information changes. I got, today, I received some financial stuff.
The monthly financials?
At what time? I guess they weren't ready until, I don't know. There's so much, and what happens is, we get critical of you, not personally, but it's when you keep, when we keep adding these other pieces. And then what happens is we just lose a sense of, of confidence or what's where. You're always straight up with us. You sit there, you take the heat for everybody. And we try to work amenable. But what happens is these changes occur and we don't, we have to ask you questions and questions that you shouldn't have to answer. And questions that we deserve, need the answers for. And as long as folks keep believing that we don't need it, that we, um, are not going to press to get it. And I'm not just talking about paper. I'm talking about communication and understanding. There is no way that I can go to someone and say, this is what we needed for, this is why we need it, and this is going great, and the next five questions to ask. It's just, it's getting, and it's getting more frustrating. But again, I think we really need to have this conversation because we had some questions with you. I know Mark presented some, some things that were pretty flat out there, right?
Yes, sir.
Um, and I think, Bill, I know we've talked, everybody's gotta kinda get this stuff out there because this isn't a, one person's here and everybody's here, you know, we're not splitting up. We're not gonna have a situation where we have a board, I think, that's going like this. We, is it accurate? We all need clarity and understanding.
That's exactly what I said.
It's not negotiable. It is, whether it was a levy on the ballot or not, this is the stuff we need to do the job we were elected to do.
Where are we at with any of our public records requests? Have you got any further requests in our last meeting? You still got some things hanging out there?
Ours, I mean, I submitted the public records request a long time ago. I'd have to pull them up to see exactly what they denied me. For whatever reason, they denied me the information. But, I mean, no, I haven't received all that information.
Maybe not as our information, that's a problem.
Yes. What are you gonna do?
What is the procedure so that we can get the accurate information and move on for the levy?
We've attempted every effort to get the information. We can't dictate to the CEO how to give us the information we need. But as long as he continues to think this board is absent and doesn't need to be part of the conversations, then, I mean, this is the position we're in. We didn't create it, we just have to deal with it. So, I, I mean, I'd made the public records request several times because that was the only way to get information. I had to go through a legal process to tell them that, hey, listen, by law, you need to give me this information because it is a public record.
And if, and if we keep having to get our information that way, that is just, that is like, um, is that a deal breaker for whatever? We have to communicate and that is not an acceptable means of communication for an executive of district and a board that we keep sending you in the Attorney General's office, an ODE, requesting information.
I guess we could file a lawsuit, a public records lawsuit in Columbus and tell them, hey, listen, this is the information requested. This is what we didn't get. So you can go to Columbus and waste your time and money down there rather than spending it on a summit or whatever they spent it on, going to whatever city or state they went to. I don't know what that was. But, uh, you know, I mean, I, I don't know what else, what other, what other road to travel down to get the information we need.
Well, when would be the deadline that we need to get the information so we can talk about the levy?
Well, it has to be, it has to be, the resolution has to be on the next board meeting. If we don't do anything outside of the regular schedule. Cause we need at least two board meetings to pass the two different resolutions.
For this time?
For this time?
For November.
But if it doesn't pass for this time, we still have time.
Two other opportunities to do so.
Yes.
Three total opportunities.
And again, what we keep saying is, for that window to, to be, I'm not gonna use the word probable anymore, possible, there's gotta be a change in how we communicate. If we do, if there's no difference in the relationship between now and that next drop-dead date, it gives us two meetings to do it. If nothing changes, and that's, I think that's the cry-out is, we need something to, does anybody want something to change?
Of course, of course.
And so we, what we can't say is, if the exact same behaviors exist, whatever that month is, whatever that meeting date is, that exists right now, what's different? There's gotta be something different between now and then. Bill, I mean, please jump in here because...
So the next board meeting is when? Is that?
July second. July second.
July second, and you need that information?
No, no. Where I'm at right now, and again, on, on this November?
It's gonna be tough to make that difference.
Yes, I...
I think, I think if you don't present a united front, if we don't present a united front with the CEO and the board, I don't think it's gonna make any difference anyway. Cause it's gonna look like we're just sitting here arguing amongst ourselves, which is...
And we're not gonna do that anymore.
Well, I'll tell you what, I agree with Mr. Ballard. If this guy resigns, I'll look at voting on it right on the day.
Well, that's, I mean, that would be, that would, that would be another option, you know, but...
And that's why I clearly put my thoughts in writing, because I didn't want us to sit here and have to debate and seem as if we're arguing among ourselves.
No, we're really not. I, I don't think...
Yeah, I think we're pretty much on the same page.
I don't think you, I don't think you and I or anybody's gonna argue. Because I mean, the one thing I know about this board is, we can agree to disagree. We put our feelings out there. I mean, our statement's out there and, and I think everybody, I, I don't think there's anybody sitting in this room that don't know how I feel about this.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I, I really, I really, I wanna do it, but I don't wanna do it. Okay? I mean, there's, there, there's reasons. And, and my reason for not wanting to do it is because I don't think right now that this might be the first time they ever felt...
A renewal.
A renewal levy because of information. And it would've been so easy to work with the Board of Education. And I'm saying work with, I mean, we know the CEO has a final say. Okay? But at least, at least we, we would've had our, we would've had our input. When somebody tells you they don't want your input, it doesn't make you feel all that good when you're on a board. Okay? I mean, and we've been around this community a lot, a lot longer. I, I noticed in the paper that they, they talk about our community and this and that. And, and I keep thinking, you spent here ten minutes and now it's their community. It's not, okay? I know people that are our community that we talked to. I mean, I, I talked to somebody yesterday who, who, who brought it up. I did, I don't bring up political stuff at home at my house on, on Father's Day and this and that. One of my relatives says, yeah, but, you know, this, this, this and this. And I said, I don't know what to tell you. I really don't. I said, I really wish that we, we had those type of conversations with, with the superintendent. But we, we, we don't get to, we don't get input and we don't get to advise. Doesn't care. He doesn't want it. Okay? In the same respect, okay? I worked on the levy committee with Bambi for eight years before we passed it. Okay, I was with her for eight years before twenty-twelve, when, when they passed it in November, when we didn't do it. And I seen the devastation. I seen how many people, how many got, people got laid off. I seen how many aides left. I seen how many sports that were cut. I seen, uh, you know, I, I, I seen where the priorities and what gets cut first, okay? And I, and I didn't like it. It hurt a lot of people. And I really have a problem with hurting that many people, okay? But even if I, I, I can't guarantee that it won't happen anyway because I see spending habits right now that, that I don't think we could afford before. We never could, okay? We cut, they, they cut the assistant principals because they couldn't afford assistant principals in the grade school. So they, they eliminated that, you know? They eliminated librarians, you know? Lib, a librarian every, goes to every third day to a school or something like that. We had all kinds of weird stuff going on. We finally got it back to where it was working again, you know? And where we were financially solvent. And the sad thing is, we didn't bring education back far enough. But I'm gonna sit here and tell you, I seen this coming in two thousand and three, when I first started going to board meetings in two thousand and three, okay? I, I seen this coming. And I, I, I can't say that, that I don't, or, or we don't own it, you know? We do. But as I told Dr. Arty, I said, we need to start talking to the clientele. We can't do this alone, okay? You seen a parent here tonight. If we had six thousand parents like that, that paid attention to their children, do you think we would be in the shape we're in today? No. Anybody that has a parent that pays attention in Lorraine City Schools will get a good education and they'll thrive when they go to college because they've got a good, diverse education.
Did he get his doctorate? Did he? When did that happen?
I think he's just waiting to get back the official certificate. Technically, technically it's complete, but...
I mean, it, it's so sad that even stuff like that, we don't, we can't even, we can't even celebrate stuff. I mean, this is so, this is so unnecessary.
That's a mention, when, when did the next set of state test results come out?
They're back.
Are they? Have we seen them?
Of course not.
Where are those at?
See, I made a recommendation or a suggestion, I should do it publicly, that we have somebody, we call it firm, we call the ESC, and have them come to our board meeting and interpret our test results for us.
Yeah.
What, what kind of picture is that? We're gonna have to have somebody from the outside, some consultant.
Cause I'll say this, that, I'll say this, in my, one of my very first meetings with this CEO, you know, when we weren't sure what was gonna happen and what he was gonna do, you know, I asked him, what's the status of our current superintendent in this district? You know, that was Dr. Jeff Graham at the time. And his answer to me was, well, I don't think I can keep him on my team because of the test scores are so low in this district. So I'm interested to see where these test scores are because he's been here just as long as Jeff Graham was at the time. And, uh, to be honest with you, if they're not any better or worse, maybe, uh, the community oughta be asking for his termination. I don't know. I'm just saying. But, uh, I think that's a good idea. Maybe we talk to the ESC and maybe they interpret, uh, those test scores for us so we know that we're getting the accurate information.
And I think it's, and I don't know where we can get our information, but the results are back. And I know there's discussions being had, but it's not being had in, in an open, in an open place. It's tough, but, you know, this is the same style that we're using. When we tell the ODE, we don't want them to come in and review what's going on in our district as well. When we tell the ODE, we don't want them to come in and review what's going on in our district as well, and everyone...
We've never turned down a review by the ODE.
Is that true, what I actually heard?
Yeah.
That we turned down the ODE review?
We did not.
The district, the CEO.
Our district, I mean, it's whether, whether it's not, it's us, when out there in the world...
How do you turn down a review from the Ohio Department of Education? I'm just, I, I'm just, I'm just unreal. I just don't understand. Don't understand.
I think there's just too much ambiguity, there's too much blank spaces, there's too much confusion for us to make a decision.
I don't disagree with you.
I agree, and that's the point that I was trying to make in the level, it's just, and if they're not willing to give it to us, it's very difficult.
And, and I'm sort of worried about what the community thinks, that if we did put the levy on, would the atmosphere out there, would they even pass it?
I would, well, you know, that's the thing, is I would consider myself irresponsible by just throwing the levy out there to the community when I don't believe in it myself at this point in time, based on what is going on in the district and based on our relationship and what we're doing in this district. So, how can I, as a board member, turn around and say, well, the heck with it? Let's put it on a community, and the community can either approve it or, you know, vote yes or vote no for it, and, you know, that's our job, right? Let's just do it, let's rubber stamp it and throw it out there and leave it alone. That would be extremely irresponsible of us to do that. And that is heartbreaking for me, because I certainly understand, as a former educator in this district and a coach in this district, the impact of not having that levy money does to programs and students. I, I certainly get it, so it puts us in a very difficult position.
I would say this, even taking a fault, so part of this, it's not about whose fault it is, because all of us share in some of the fault. The truth still being, a relationship between a community, a board, and its staff, and the CEO represents the staff in this regard, has to be rolling in the same direction to do this. It's difficult to pass these things. When everybody's rolling in the same direction, it's difficult. It's almost reckless and irresponsible for us to be in this state as we exist. And it's what is, even with a lot of ambiguity, it is very clear that there's not a unified front on this. A unified understanding, a unified, um, knowledge of, of what to do, how to do it. And I think that's one of the things that people have, they wanna, listen, they wanna see that there's some folks who agree on how they're gonna execute. Um, and you can ask Bambi Dillon or anybody else who's run a campaign. If they look at the optics of this relationship, and you, that you're bringing outside consultant and say, hey, we want you to run our land, our campaign levy, they would be like, the, it's a tough, that's a tough pickup. And I think, um, the work that Bambi and those folks do in our community, um, even for us to pass something in this condition off to them, I hate when I'm working on somebody's campaign and they've created a situation that makes it very difficult for us to work through. This situation for any consultant firm or any community group to run a levy?
Well, how do we present it in a more positive attitude?
So that we can move on.
Well, I, I, I want to, I wanna let you know something about levy committees and this and that, is, we do have these committees, we have, we have people like principals come and work with us. Okay? Number one, I don't know the principals now, which I used to know. Number two is, the principals don't know anybody either. So, I don't, I don't think they could be, that even the, the principal situation, they, they couldn't be effective yet. Right, right, right? I, I just don't think it, there's relationships that have to be built, or that were built over the years that, that are no longer, no longer in place.
I was at a Juneteenth celebration on, um, on Saturday, and, um, they had, like, the Board of Mental Health say some things, and they had representation from the school district, and I heard Lorraine, we're doing the audio, I hear Lorraine City Schools, I'm like, okay, great, right? And, um, I forget the young man's name, very articulate, seemed like a really nice guy. He's the new director of special education.
Yes.
So, he was the one who was representing Lorraine at this event. And, um, it has no reflection on him at all. But when you're in a community, what you always do is you figure out, who from this group do we send to represent us that connects or is connected with that group?
They already left.
And one of the, one of the things about Lorraine that was, and I know because I, I was, I went to Lorraine High School, right? Is how they engage with people, right? And this person didn't know anyone, didn't know anything about us, didn't, and when, and, and the number of questions typically, just like when you, if you're working out at the, uh, at the International Festival, the questions that people ask, they ask of people they know. And if you send to the International Festival a group of folks who know nothing about Lorraine, who Lorraine people don't recognize them, good luck with, so, of all the people in this district, who people could recognize and identify with, I'll just say it flatly, the wisdom of sending somebody who's completely unknown in that atmosphere, that speaks volumes to how people, to who's not in the room when they're doing strategy. Because it is, I mean, this is, these are our community festivals, these are neighborhood things, these are places where people connect. And again, you send them with people who are connected, if you do that. Again, those are the kind of things that, um, that sometimes they aren't all about academics, but they are about our PR, they are about our image, they are about, and what happens is, when you don't talk to folks who, whether it's, whether it's a messed up community or not, when you don't engage with folks who have that experience, our perspective, then that's one less piece of information that you have to use when you're doing those decisions, making those. And little subtle things like that, believe me, to a lot of folks, were speaking volumes. And, um, it's not empirical data, there's not a survey that was done to, to, to test its validity. But again, these are, um, so it's just, it's stuff, it's sometimes, it's really subtle things. And again, in a levy environment, all these things have to be very intentional. Who you send to speak to this union, or that union, or that organization, or that group, or that group? You, you select people from that broad base of that campaign and from the district, and we, you know, so when I see things like that, that also tells, the cooperation that we have to have to pass the levies, Bill 70, with our employees, the support that we need from teachers, um, they did a whole lot of work to build those relationships and that rapport. And right now, the environments, you were sharing with me, even what's happening in the buildings, how unnerved people are. All these things contribute to the atmosphere of passing a levy. Not knowing who's employed and who's not employed. Those things for communities, when you're trying to pass a levy, all that stuff flowing in the air, that just creates a lot of uphill struggle. And I'm just being, I mean, you know, anybody else, I mean, anybody who's worked on a levy campaign, be it yours or someone else's, all those, it's hard, so. Those are the things that I think we need to, if, there's some folks who are, who have made it very clear, the ultimatum of that levy. There are others of us who've said, we haven't gone that far yet, but what we expect, and the longer we don't get what we expect, the closer we get to there. Yeah?
My thing is, if we don't get the renewal on, was it 3.1, 2 million?
3.1.
That's, uh, approximately like 50 teachers that you would have to...
If they so choose to respond to it.
Many teachers who lose the support, the administrative salaries we have in front of us.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Six in one, half dozen or nothing. Really?
Yeah, this is, this, this, and the outcomes of this, we've all talked, are horrific, are frightening to us. Um, but I think the other thing that we've stated is, dealing with money issues, we've dealt with before, we've had deficits before. Dealing with no communication, not having to do our fiduciary responsibility, and the things that we need to ask a community? I think what you say, Mark, that would be irresponsible.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Give us what we need to do our job right.
And the community continues to say, well, can't you guys work together? And I just want to be on record that we've tried from day one, you know? We've gone to his town hall meetings, we've gone to his business associate meetings. I mean, so the refusal to work together is not coming from us. We've, we've given, 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 and he goes on record by saying, I'm not going in there, I'm not talking, and I don't have to. That's just somewhat disrespectful, uh, when you're trying to be collaborative and cooperative and those kind of things. So, that, I mean, we, we've gotta get back to hello. We really have to get back to hello and understanding that we are in this together, so.
Still, what would be the procedure so that we can get that? We're talking about it, but we need, uh, an active role of thrust, something to get us going so that the community to see that we are together when it comes to the levy renewal. We understand that, but we need to get the community to think that we are positive now, you see what I'm saying? When we were disagreeing, we can dis, we learned how to disagree together. But that wasn't gonna be a continuous departure about how we felt about the community. Because all of us, for one thing, understand the community, we live in the community, we love the community, we, we've gone to school in the community, most of us, our children have done that. So, at the end, the Board of Education is still going to be of like mind on most things after we work it out. And they should not think that because we have a difference of opinion, that it was gonna be a, a continuous effort, that it would stay that way. That when it would come to the love of our community and what we were gonna do about the levy renewal, that, that's what was going to win out. We need additional information, we need clarity.
And communication. And communication.
Yes, I wanted you to say it again. Communication, we, we just need that.
I, I would say honestly, I think it's very clear to anyone and everyone what our base, like, what they call it, um, preconditions?
Yes.
And they're not, and they're not unreasonable, nothing that we've said is unreasonable. No one has told me that this is unreasonable. And, and I think, and I'm not speaking of everybody, that's a starting point. To figure out if we gonna get married, we got hello, we haven't had the hello yet. And I think once we get, once we, like anything else, you gotta start the relationship to improve it. Right now, not only we have not started it, it's been set backwards. I mean, right now, we've been told clearly, don't have to, don't need to, it ain't gonna. I guess if he was trying, if, if Mr. Hardy was trying to express clarification and on what his expectation of our relationship was, maybe he did that. And what we're saying is, our expectation hasn't changed. We still expect communication, we still expect mutual respect. Um, we don't expect him to do what we say do, we don't expect to, we don't expect to advise, but we will be in a relationship that, and again, this is not about us individuals, there is a responsibility that the CEO, our superintendent, or whatever the leader of this, of that administrative body is, and a board communicate. It is not up to Tim, or Mark, or Yvonne, or Bill, or Tony, or David. These positions have an obligation to communicate with each other. Just like us and you. You don't, do you, do you see any place where your position does not have an obligation to have mutual, interactive communication with the board?
Of course not. Don't have to communicate.
And we, and it's an expectation that we have based on our roles, it's also an expectation that we have of the community. When they elected us, House Bill 70 did not trump the expectations that the community has of this relationship.
Thank you.
So...
All right.
We've expressed.
Good enough. Second hearing in the public. Yes, sir. Good to see you again.
Oh, and nice seeing you too.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, first, I, I was just in awe of the gentleman who spoke here. I'm flabbergasted. Uh, and as you mentioned, if we had more people, uh, from Lorraine, uh, being that active, we'd be in a lot better place than we are now. Just tremendous. I'd like to get in touch with him la- later on. Uh, first, um, I'd like to congratulate you for keeping your practice of having board meetings on Monday, probably every other Monday here. You know, even, by the way, you know, just one person speaking, Lorraine is a city of how many people? About 62, 63,000. So, not only on the city level here, but nationally, uh, just, where did citizenship go? And, uh, you know, I feel kinda guilty in saying that because I've just started coming to these board meetings last spring. Where was I before, you know? I should've been, uh, coming here regularly. Now, uh, so again, I, uh, want to congratulate you, Mr. Ballard, and thank you for the position that you've taken very publicly, uh, for calling for the resignation of both David Hardy and Tony Richardson. Now, you, Mr. Damacchia, have expressed at least, all I read is what I know in the newspaper, you know, so. But it seems that you are in accord with that stance of the double resignation, and I hope that, uh, you know, the other three board members will follow along. It's, I think it was a very bold and necessary and a wise move to make publicly. I thank you for that. Okay, also, uh, as I said, uh, all I know is what I read in the newspaper, and a couple of days ago, Katie Nix, uh, she's, she's just a wonder, she's the reporter from The Chronicle. She has done a bang-up job, her, oh, what do you call it? Investigative reporting, uh, you know, behind the scenes, what is going on here? She's a terrific young reporter, uh, and I'm just in, you know, in awe of her. Both her and the editorials that The Chronicle, uh, has published from time to time. Very, very much on point here. Now, uh, when I read a couple of days ago in Katie Nix's column that there was gonna be a board meeting, uh, on Monday at 5:00 PM, and then down a couple of lines from there, it said that there was gonna be a, a meeting of the Academic Distress Commission at Monday at 5:00. And I'm thinking, must be a misprint, you know? I was tempted to call, you know? This can't be. It's funny that that meeting is taking place, it's right around here, about five minutes, you know, a couple, is taking place at the same time. Funny, funny. I wonder how that came about? You know, coincidence, divine providence, I, I don't know.
I think they also took our podium and our recording system for it too.
Okay. I wish that they would...
The next will be the flag to go.
Yeah, I wish that, that they would have a podium, because personally, I'm kinda nervous and I would like to have had something to, you know, to... Now, there was, uh, mentioned recently about the tests. You know, we are in this sad state because of House Bill 70, and because of the tests, the detestable tests, uh, and the report cards about the Lorraine schools. If you ever find out, uh, you know, I, I would like to see those test scores. If you could direct me to where I can find the test scores and the report cards, I would like to know if anybody could contact me. By the way, I, I guess maybe I'll back up a little bit. A, a protocol here, I guess I'm supposed to state my name and, uh, you know, address. Uh, my name is Joe Vascony. I'm a resident, Ev Lorraine was born and raised part of the time here. I live at 2622 East Erie Avenue, been there for 50 years. All three of my children went through Lorraine schools. We were very happy with that. I'm a retired public school teacher. Most of my teaching was in Avon Lake. I retired in 99, uh, after about 35 years. My wife also taught here. So, I've got, I've been doing maybe more thinking about education since I retired than I should've been during that time here. So, uh, now, even that term CEO, uh, I guess that's part of House Bill 70. I've called, and I, I still would like, I'll call them again, I'd like to get a copy of that. Not that I would be able to understand it, but, uh, you know, I, I would like to see that. But that term CEO, uh, I, you know, it's almost as if... But that term CEO, I, you know, it's almost as if the people who drafted House Bill 70, that schools ought to be run like a business, because business knows how to get things done, and they are, you know, they're on the ball. I like to follow national news, too. And if I may, our CEO in the White House has run, I think, six of his companies into bankruptcy. Are we witnessing that here? I hope not. But personally, both on the national level and on the Lorraine schools level, I keep seeing parallels, seeing parallels, and it's frightening, I'm frightened. You know, it's, well, that's about, I probably have more to say, but, you know, again, I want to congratulate you and commend you for keeping up these meetings here, and just good luck and continue on your work here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask, can we go to the ODE to get our test results, or have you seen the test results yet?
I haven't.
How would we go about getting them?
You get them online.
Yeah, they're online, I think they're public.
The report card won't be done until August, but I'm talking about the raw data that's already been sent to our district.
I don't think you get raw data online, or you get it right.
But we've got the data back in our district. The information is back.
I think it was, I think so.
I know it is.
I think it was back a long time ago, but...
But I'm just saying, how can we get the data? If we have to learn to interpret it ourselves, or maybe go down and have Claire interpret it for us, the information is here. Can we go directly to the ODE to get it? Do we need to do a formal request to the CEO to get it?
It's interesting. I mean, obviously, like most of House Bill 70, I don't think that's been...
Written.
Written, you know, so, I don't see anything that would stop us, we're still the elected Board of Education.
Can somebody contact Paul's office, maybe, to see if we can get, I mean, I'm sure you want to interpret it for us, but we can figure out the code, we can crack the code. They've cracked the code already, because I've already heard that, from what I've heard, the results are not what they expected. They are not. So, they've cracked the code, they've just shared the code with us, yeah.
You know, when...
Or to public.
That's my point.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not standing up for anybody, but, because I said this to Tom Tucker, when Tom Tucker came in, there was a little bump up in the scores, you know, and I told Tom, I says, "You know, Tom, those really aren't your scores. Those are the superintendent, that was before you, that's her scores. Because you ain't been here long enough to accomplish anything." You know, and I'm not so sure that it wouldn't hold true here, that they're his, but they're not his, but the second group, the ones that come in next, the ones that come in next, are definitely you own that.
But fighting that point, but that's the same barometer, or the yardstick that they used with the previous administration.
Right.
So, I mean, those weren't really just either, let's just use that as an example. But that's what they used when they terminated.
So, if it was good then, why wouldn't it be good now?
You just can't keep moving it.
This is, like I said, this is a way that I think.
I appreciate it.
I'm not saying that...
I'm just utilizing your logic, though.
Actually, you do get held accountable for, but, I mean, but I don't see how it's fair to hold somebody accountable for something that they really do have input on.
The equity in this is not that, that he set the standard.
Yeah, he set the standard.
So, by the same measure you judge, will you be judged? And if you have now executed judgment on folks unreasonably, so, for example, we know, it took the district how many years to get into this academic situation? And we know for a fact that, I don't care if ODE tells you to give me a two-year plan, it's not a two-year out. We know this, three years. None of us are expecting to see this level of accomplishment, that ODCE says that you need to be released from this, to happen in the next number of years. It takes a period of time. But when you begin to terminate people, assess that this is why we're failing, well, then if that's the kind of, if that's what you put out, that's what comes back.
That's right.
I would still like to see the score.
I'd like to, too.
Yeah.
Because...
Could we figure that out for us?
We'll ask Graham.
At least try to get us an answer.
Yeah, I'll ask Graham.
And to take that as a formal request, if you would like that information.
I mean, that's, that's gonna...
That's just not a suggestion.
That's gonna be a yearly thing, because we, you know, we're gonna know, we're gonna wanna know this year, we're gonna want to know next year, we're gonna want to know the year after that.
That's the way they set the plan.
Here's what's always happened, we never had to ask for stuff like this. This is what, this is what we're supposed to not be having to ask for.
So, if they've had these results, why haven't they given them?
It's just...
Transparency, that's fine, that's sarcasm.
Yeah, we're...
And I can help you a little bit with statistical analysis, since I have a minor in it. I might be able to help somewhat in that area, though I would like an expert.
Well, yeah, and the thing is, it's like five-year forecast, we've been through these with such frequency.
Yeah, I think you can do a pretty good job, just, you know...
I think that's, that's the point that I see that we keep emphasizing, is stuff that we shouldn't be asking for, that we should be having knowledge of, that's, this is so ridiculous.
I still don't know how to get around it, so that at the end, that we can do...
We've been trying for a year.
Keep asking.
We've been trying for a year, good luck.
But if we're stuck, see, that's what I'm saying, if we're stuck, we're stuck. And it's just not going to go anywhere, it's not us. And if we're stuck right here, and you're saying that he needs to come here, and he's obviously not going to come here, what's the next plan? Because you've gotta have a next plan, if that, if that's not going to occur.
I think them next things are rolling themselves out.
I think Hart gave up with the next plan.
I like it. All right. Next board meeting is July 2nd, 5:00 o'clock, right here.
Called the Mark Ballard Plan. You got the Youngstown Plan? You got the Ballard Plan?
I like that.
Obamacare, Trump Care, the Ballard Plan.
I need a motion to adjourn. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Ballard? Mr. Sergeal? Mr. Democia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.